Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's public hearing regarding the budget. We tried to, I just want to just mention real quickly, we tried to accommodate a request from the public to have meetings on different times. And I know that Councilwoman Strasburger in particular and Councilwoman Gross had mentioned that they would like to do host meetings on a different day for this meeting and for other meetings. So we're looking into those, the possibility of having different dates. With that said, will the clerk please call the roll?
We don't call the roll for public hearings, councilwoman.
I'm sorry, I don't have my sheet, thank you. So then we'll have the clerk, we'll call the public speakers. One at a time, you'll have three minutes to speak, to present your comments. And the tech people will automatically shut the mics off when three minutes are up. So please make your comments within three minutes. And if you have anything in written and writing, you can always submit that to council as well. And we do read those and we do see with some of the things you're saying. And we're all, we're joined by, I'm just gonna say, we are joined by, I believe, all members of council at this point. With that said, Madam Clerk, would you please call the first speaker?
Holly Keen.
Hi there, City Council, it's Holly Keen. I live in East Liberty, Councilman Coghill, that was really rich right before the call when you said, what, tell me what the damages are, or something like that. Oh, I love when boomers use technology. Anyway, I'm a licensed social worker and I provide case management services to homeless veterans. I live in East Liberty. When I was thinking about this budget, I thought of the many people that I've worked with. I've had the privilege of working with as a social worker and how they're not considered in this proposed budget. I thought of the immigrant students that I've worked with at city middle and high schools. I thought of the lifelong Pittsburghers with cognitive disabilities. The six-year-old Daisy Scouts right here in East Liberty. These are three populations, for example, new Americans, the neurodiverse and black girls that are rarely on the receiving end of justice, much less the hands of police officers. I didn't plan to use all my time, but I probably will because as I was reviewing the budget this morning, there was just so much I wanted to call out. But it's great that there is, what, 60 other people here at this time. I'm really glad that they're gonna have the chance to talk to. Here are some of the goals of the budget that are crazy. The first is promote Pittsburgh Bureau of Police accomplishments and contributions to the community during a time when reform is being discussed. So I think maybe the mayor meant to write gaslight citizens' experience of police brutality here. Another goal is increase the number of Pittsburgh police interns by expanding recruitment efforts outside of the Pittsburgh region. All summer protesters like myself have been erroneously labeled as outsiders. But you are literally suggesting recruiting outsiders to be police interns, where there can become police officers in the next five years when the city's forecast to increase the police budget by $20 million more dollars. In partnership with the Bureau of Police, all of these goals, by the way, are from the Bureau of Administration, which just shows how the police budget itself is an inaccurate representation of how much money goes to policing. So yeah, this one was in partnership with the Bureau of Police. Launch a virtual block watch crime prevention partnership registry for private cameras. So the Department of Public Safety is asking citizens to voluntarily contribute to police surveillance. This budget says that success for this measure will be measured by the strong partnership created between police and the community. Think about who can afford home security for one minute. This is the worst one because I'm a social worker and it calls out my alma mater, the University of Pittsburgh School of Social Work. Identify the appropriate police social work model for the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police by continuing partnership with the University of
The next speaker is Amy Fergang.
Hello, everybody. Can you all hear me? Okay, hello, so I'm here today to talk about defunding the police. This whole conversation has just been wild to listen to and to know that most of you think about this idea of defunding the police by 50% as some wild idea. What a lot of people, activists here, don't wanna say, but I'll say is that some of us want to defund the police by 100% and see that this request that we're making is actually totally reasonable, even though some of you see it as radical, but it's just wild because we're in completely different pages. And I just wanna make it really clear that to some of us on this side, it feels completely bogus that you all see this as some radical idea. I think that any politician who ever votes no against legislation that takes power away from the police, then you aren't a progressive. Progressive means progress. It means liberation from this racist, violent, past-the-point-of-reform cult of domestic abusers in uniform. I know that last week Deborah Gross wanted to raise a motion that would cut, that would redirect some funding from the police department that was only worth the amount equivalent to nine and a half cop positions, which is, which wouldn't even mean firing anyone. It would just be not replacing positions. And that not a single other person voted yes in favor of it. I applaud Deborah Gross for raising this motion. And I think every single other one of you, if you claim to be a progressive, you are absolutely not. You are an embarrassment. Please choose to be on the right side of history. And, and thank you for hearing me out today. I, yeah, the end.
The next speaker is Matthew Cartier. Matthew Cartier. Okay, the next speaker is Chloe Brown.
Hello, my name is Chloe, zip code 15217. I would first like to thank you for being willing to have this meeting at a more accessible time for me as a high school student. However, the less than 48 hours notice was a bit of a shock. In the future, this budget hearing process must continue to be more accessible and more publicized. I will keep my statement today on a more anecdotal level as I'm sure many, including myself, at past meetings have provided you more than enough facts and statistics to prove the necessity of redesigning this budget. I grew up just outside of Pittsburgh in Plum Borough, a very suburban, very white neighborhood. I grew up being told that my town and the city of Pittsburgh were some of the quote-unquote safest in the country. I never questioned why this was. Little did I know that the main reason we were bestowed with these titles was because of the police force that was already overstaffed and overfunded for a city of Pittsburgh's size. While this may make a place seem safer to white business owners, the black community and many others who are disproportionately targeted by them do not feel the same comfort. I noticed a distinct change in the attitude of my peers towards Pittsburgh when I moved to Squirrel Hill and started going to Alderice. There was less blind pride, more criticism and resentment. And a lot of it has to be accredited to the killings of Romar Tally and Antoine Rose II by the police. And the fact that despite these tragic events, city officials like Paduto and many of you here on the council continue to defend their outrageously high budget. It hurts me when you claim that we, who were out protesting every damn week this summer, are qualified enough somehow to speak on these issues, that we don't represent Pittsburgh. I was born and raised here. How much more Pittsburgh do you want? Should I start watching The Stillers and saying yens? Would that make yens finally listen to me? Everyone here today calling for the reallocation of police funds are not outside agitators. We are real residents who are concerned about our own safety and the safety of our communities. How can you continue defending the budget of the police while Pittsburgh has been deemed the worst city for black women? Changes need to happen and the police have proven that they are diametrically opposed to those necessary changes. Put money into reducing crime and improving living standards. This is done through social services like permanently affordable housing and cheaper, more reliable and convenient public transportation. This is not done through further increasing or even maintaining a police budget, which has grown 50% since Paduto came into office. As more police presence only means more people will show up after a crime has already happened, preventing nothing. This is also done through taxing UPMC. No nonprofit should have a CEO who makes $9 million a year. Our city is in need and Paduto abandoned us when he abandoned the lawsuit against them. The whole world is in crisis right now. You have a chance to make some kind of difference. Listen to the voices of real Pittsburghers. Defund the police, reallocate those funds to social services and tax UPMC now. I yield my time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Martin Taylor.
Hello, I would like to thank the City Council for scheduling this meeting during more accessible hours. The working class is one group highly affected by the budget and it is shocking to me that this kind of timing was not used before. Regardless, an institution with the legal authority to kill people is already immoral, even more so without due process. And not even mentioning the staggeringly unjust proportions towards black people and other people of color, poor and unhoused, the disabled, transgender individuals in nearly every other minority group in this country. There are a number of statistics out there about police brutality as it is and as it has progressed. But know that any number of people harmed and killed at the hands of police above zero is unacceptable. How many protesters need to be brutalized before you will see them eye to eye? How many people need to be shot by police before you say enough is enough? We are all part of the public too. And for an authority to deem the comfort of one section of society over the lives of another is wildly unjust. There are so many causes in this world that this council could choose to support that this budget is actively working against. Take your pick, there's a pandemic, a recession, a rapidly intensifying housing crisis, hunger is skyrocketing, as well as unemployment. All of these are within your purview to solve or at the very least tackle. But instead, this government is using its powers to worsen these issues by reducing money where it is so badly needed and ignoring meeting after meeting of constituents mad that the force designated for their safety is making their world anything but. Do you think this is only young punks asking for this? Do you not think that there are adults with these beliefs? Do you mistake our anger for naivete? To not trust an electorate to know what they need to be safe and thrive is to deny everything that democracy stands for. It does not show care and it does not show a love for your community. Your closed ears show nothing but a support for power and a disdain for those who need the most in this society. The goal is not to sow chaos. The goal is to stop the most marginalized people from being actively and passively harmed by a system that does not care for their well-being. We are being fed up with being accosted by the hand of authority. And this meeting, among others, and among the protests that have happened and are certain to continue, shows that this is a serious demand. Do anything to reduce the amount of, amount budgeted for police because doing nothing will leave blood on your hands in the streets of this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Isaac Smith.
Hello. Hello, my name is Isaac Smith. And my partner and I are residents of Greenfield in Pittsburgh. I'm asking City Council today to listen to our request for an anti-racist budget that works for all Pittsburgh residents. In particular, we are asking for major changes to the police budget. We continue to ask for a 50% reduction in the police budget as well as additional taxes to wealthy corporations, developers and UPMC. These taxes and budget reallocations will fund affordable housing, jobs with living wages, better education for Pittsburghers and more robust social services. We believe it is the City Council's responsibility to strongly advocate for changes in state law that would allow Pittsburgh to tax our city's largest nonprofits. My partner and I submitted email comments to a recent City Council meeting and we received a response from Councilman O'Connor. We appreciate his office reaching out, but we were disheartened by the message. While Councilman O'Connor's office stated that the police budget cannot be changed because of the FOP budget contract, there is evidence that shows the opposite. State Act 265 says the city can reduce the number of police employees for reasons of economy or lack of funds. The FOP budget contract itself says that the city has the right to determine the size and organization of the police bureau. We are asking City Council to wield your political authority and prioritize these budget reallocations. You can reject this proposed budget. You can vote down line items. You can propose amendments. We can put pressure on Mayor Paduto's office to make these changes. It will, it is possible to imagine and enact a Pittsburgh that is safe for all of its residents. Finally, we are disappointed with the budgeting hearing process and the late notice of this meeting that left residents scrambling to prepare. We would like to see a more accessible and democratic process for residents to weigh in on a budget discussion in the future. I yield the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ryan Katz. Alexa Schwartz.
My name is Alexa Schwartz. I live in Beachview in Anthony Coghill's district and thanks for holding this on Saturday. I am pursuing my master's in social work at Pitt. I provide mental health services to people in early addiction recovery and I work as an after-school instructor with students who are experiencing homelessness. Realocating money from the police and towards social services and education is a popular idea for increasing public safety. I can speak to the ways in which these fields and systems overlap. For example, tracing a client's trauma history and family history can show how trauma led to substance use and addiction, which may have then led to a family member being incarcerated, family separation, homelessness, all of which impact education. For folks receiving services, it is obvious that lack of resources, support and not having money to meet their basic needs influence the events that happen to them. For black and brown people living in Pittsburgh, the racism exacerbates just about every problem I mentioned and it bears repeating that Pittsburgh has been found to be the worst place for black women to live by almost every indicator of livability. Then when we look at the people on the service end, you see service coordinators, case managers, counselors, shelter advocates, social workers and teachers who are often the ones doing the work of a lot of these roles all at once. The pay for these jobs is not good. People in these jobs are promoting the safety of the community. Most of the time, they do not kill anyone. They de-escalate as part of their job without hurting people. If safety and livability is what we value, let's do what actually increases safety. Instead of police reform, let's be talking about educational reform, social services reform. Let's invest in them. Let's budget for evidence-based, trauma-informed measures that actually increase public safety. And let's budget in a way that's anti-racist. We need to budget for the crisis that we are in with the coronavirus. I yield my time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Naomi Maraz. James O'Toole.
Hold on one second, Kim, she's there, but her, her mic is on mute.
I apologize, yeah.
There you go. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Naomi Maraz. I live in Sharpburg and I work in Squirrel Hill. First off, thank you for taking this small step forward and having a meeting today. I'm here to talk about specific things. To begin, I work in the education field. I work with teachers and parents who have been doing their best just to survive. I work with folks who are predominantly Spanish-speaking, with black and brown folks whom are essential workers, folks who have already continuously have had to endure endless systemic oppression. With that being said, it is extremely important to cancel Paduto's budget cuts and defund the police. Right now and always, the priority should be to save the public sector jobs in health and social services, to save and help everyone that is trying to survive, to help every essential worker. The fact that Paduto is considering not prioritizing the actual needs of the communities that he is and that you all are supposed to be trying to help and support is completely mind-blowing. To add, corporations and big developers, including UPMC, need to be taxed and fully funded, such as, we're not limited to housing, transportation, healthcare and public education. There are folks, not only where I work, but throughout, in great need of financial support of a safe and stable public transportation system. There are folks losing jobs, losing hours, losing the ability to provide essential things, such as a roof over their families, food in their refrigerators. There are folks that are afraid. There are folks that are trying to survive. Some of the teachers and parents that I work with every day fear that it will continue to get worse and that the rate of cases rising and folks not taking precaution, it will. Working in a school and having to do sudden closures due to COVID-19, our parents and staff don't know what to foresee. They wake up every single day with uncertainties and fear. They don't know how they will pay rent next month. They are afraid of another sudden closure because they depend on our school staying open. They don't have a stable support system in the communities where they reside. A lot of us have been attending these meetings because we have been able to, during the week, we have that privilege. This is us advocating for everyone that is unable to, for every single person who is living afraid every day full of uncertainties. We are attending these meetings to ensure that you all are aware of how absurd it is to see others around us literally trying to survive every day. Meanwhile, an absurd budget is being discussed. We demand that you all do everything in your power to work towards cutting Paduto's budget by at least 50% and we demand that you all think of every single individual out there working, of every essential worker that is just trying to survive. I stand in complete solidarity with Stop the Station and with every single individual here in this meeting and with everyone that has not been able to attend due to the lack of transparency and with everyone who is just trying to survive and fighting against a continuous systemic oppression. Thank you.
Thank you.
James O'Toole.
Hello, I'm James, constituent of Councilwoman Gross. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you to the speaker so far. The priorities reflected in this budget are not those that I agree with for reasons that have been well articulated by others. If you are going to pass it as it stands, however, I'd at least implore you to tie increased share going to public safety with meaningful mechanisms to strengthen officer accountability. I'm assuming the members here saw the story from public source this week about the significant number of officers with double-digit complaints sustained against them who remain on the force, including one with 119 allegations of misconduct since 2010. You know, we hear over and over in these conversations that we're dealing with, quote, "a few bad apples", first of all, proportionally. It's not just a few bad apples, if you look at the numbers in that story. But leaving that aside, you know, the full saying, it's "a few bad apples ruin the bunch". You know, what these numbers show is a culture of impunity and it's just something that exists in no other profession. So no doubt the city's hands are tied when it comes to discipline and meaningful ways. We need reforms at the state level. The city civilian leadership needs to fight a lot harder for us than they have previously when it comes time to renegotiate the union contract. But you're not powerless. You know, by this point, thousands of Pittsburghers know the name Paul Abel. This is an officer with a well-documented history of violence and excessive force. And it's unconscionable that men like him have been allowed to continue roaming our streets and brutalizing our neighbors, given their histories. That same public source story mentioned officers who had domestic violence and sexual harassment and complaints sustained against them and who continue to serve. So of course, these names are anonymous, but city leaders do have access to this information. You know who these people are. So I think you have to be more transparent when it comes to releasing data on police misconduct and disciplinary results proactively, albeit anonymized, but at the incident level, not just when a journalist demands it so that the public can understand the scope of these problems and how they're being addressed. That's in the city's open data law and there are a lot of other cities that already do this. Beyond that, I saw that Public Safety said they didn't have time to comment for the public source story, but they did have time to leak to KDK just before that story came out that Paul Abel had been suspended pending termination. So that power is there, you know, maybe it gets reversed in arbitration, but it's at least an underused tool available to demonstrate that this kind of behavior won't be tolerated. If you can't fire officers like this, mandate that they be permanently reassigned to desk duty or somewhere else where their opportunities to betray the public trust are more limited. I think that if we step back, this is just an insane system. You know, no community starting from scratch would say, let's create a force of nearly 1,000 people carrying weapons who can get away with violence and misconduct over and over and over without consequences. And meanwhile, let's pay teachers, social workers and others barely a living wage for the critical work they do. If you're going to insist on moving forward with this set of priorities, please think about the message it sends when you ignore the lack of accountability that so many residents are upset about. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jonkey Maines Mason.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I just wanna start by thanking council members for offering this time to speak. And I am, my name is Yanni Maines Mason. I live in Regent Square. And I am also here to talk about defunding the police or ask for that. And I want to open by saying I am staying aware that defunding and creating an anti-racist budget is not so easy as that. And that there are more complications than just doing it. Questions of how will we be safe? And the police are good people, how can we just take their jobs away? And how would we even go about defunding? And what if I lose my friends and my support and my position? And probably even more complicated questions on each of your hearts. And I think I and, and I think we implore you to face those questions with bravery. I'm not gonna tell you that it will be easy, but I will tell you and I think that we've all touched on here is that the resources are there. There are resources to help you all navigate questions of community safety and relearning that the police actually cause harm and resources even for how we would go about defunding. All of those resources are by so many smart people. And so I'm leaving room for this to be difficult while also recognizing that those difficulties aren't insurmountable. I hope you all can be brave for all of our sakes and thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Madeline McGrady.
Hello, my name is Madeline McGrady. I am a resident of Pittsburgh's Friendship Neighborhood and a frontline human services worker. For the last four years, I've served young people who are aging out of foster care or experiencing homelessness in Pittsburgh. And I will be starting the Masters in Social Work Program at the University of Pittsburgh in the fall. It was important to me to be here today to emphasize to this council in person that Pittsburgh doesn't just want, Pittsburgh desperately needs a 2021 budget that prioritizes relief and restorative justice. That means unequivocally slashing the police budget, which is grotesquely bloated, and allocating, allocating that funding to the essential relief that Pittsburghers desperately need. As someone working with some of the most vulnerable members of our community, I can attest that Pittsburghers are being crushed, not only by the pandemic, but by a government that has utterly failed to provide any meaningful protections or relief. That devastation is immeasurably compounded by Pittsburgh's systemic racism problem, which is reflected in stark disparities in housing, healthcare, education and income by race. We need to fund guaranteed, safe and affordable housing, free and paid education and training opportunities, free and equitable healthcare, accessible public transportation and affordable childcare. If defunding the police sounds radical, ask yourself, is it radical to say that people need relief? Ask yourself, do the police provide that relief? From my standpoint, the answer is a resounding no. People are hungry, people are scared, people are desperate. The most vulnerable members of our community are not thinking about attending this hearing before you today. They are focused on surviving. That is why those of us with privilege and power must see that and put as much money as we humanly can towards providing relief. Whether or not you agree, hear us when we tell you that the police provide no relief and cannot be reformed. We do not need the police. We need healthcare, housing and opportunity. Take heed and slash the police funding reflected in the proposed budget. And that includes stopping the relocation of the Zone 5 police station and halting all police-related infrastructure projects and purchases reflected in the capital budget. That is all, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Daniel Sun.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. My name is Daniel Sun. I live in Bloomfield, zip code 15224, and I am part of Stop the Station. I obviously oppose the budget and support Stop the Station's demands. I'm also here because I find it frustrating that when council tries to meet the demands of the people, they barely meet it. This hearing today is the equivalent of when your mom tells you to go wash your hands. So you go and turn on the sink and then you maybe run your hands in the water once, but you don't bother with the soap and then you leave. This hearing was announced 48 hours ago. What's the point of holding this if there's no time to tell anyone about it? It's like when you host a dinner party, do you tell everyone it's happening in two days? When Stop the Station hosted its own budget hearing for you all to attend, we gave you the invite almost two weeks prior and none of you showed. So I guess what you were hoping to accomplish was that no one would make it today, but there are 56 of us here because we care. I am also frustrated because I don't know what we need to say to convince you that this budget is a bad idea. We're telling you that we have too many police per capita as compared to comparable cities with way fewer police officers. The police budget has increased nearly 50% since Paduto's been in office, but Pittsburgh has been losing population over the last five years. So what do we need this money for? Coghill thinks that it's because of sporting events and hills, but we're not the hilliest and sportiest town of all time. Denver has steeper hills with sports and fewer cops. A statement like this without any logic would only make sense coming from maybe the FOP. A statement like this without any logic would only make sense coming from maybe the FOP, which Coghill is conveniently endorsed by and who I'm sure get more than three minutes of his time. Council needs to stop getting their policy ideas from corporations and groups and start listening to the people. I yield my time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Matt Rubin.
Hello, my name is Matt Rubin. I live in Troy Hill. I also want to thank you all for taking the time to have this meeting today and also suggest that, you know, 48 hours notice is not a lot of time. The thing about, you know, folks being working class in Pittsburgh is sometimes you have jobs that even work on weekends. Sometimes you need to plan things. Sometimes if it's your day off, you already have things planned. People need to be able to make plans, be able to make time for things. But I do appreciate the effort. I appreciate that you're listening to us a little bit. I hope that we continue to make these changes and to think about each time that you're beginning a new planning process instead of after you've already voted on whether or not to amend things and are planning to have a final vote in a few days. I think the second that you're planning things is when you need to think, how do we make this more accessible to the working class and include and actively seek the input of the people of Pittsburgh? Not what happened here. I also want to thank you all for recognizing and I think actually agreeing with us on something that a lot of people have talked about here. And you've argued against, but your actions have actually agreed with us. So early this year, y'all voted for to support and call for the mayor to have a hiring freeze on police and touted this in police reforms. The mayor has instituted that that higher increase. Thank you. What I don't understand is why then in the budget, it reckons it celebrates the increase in the number of police as an accomplishment. It celebrates, you know, recruiting efforts as an accomplishment in the budget report. And I don't understand why, if we have a hiring freeze, the number of positions budgeted for next year is the same. What I don't understand is why, if we have a hiring freeze by which we have positions which are not being filled. Thus, we are spending, we are saving money. Why aren't we putting that money towards other things and planning for that? Why, when we say to you that we've heard it said that about 250 or something, police officers are going to be eligible for retirement next year? That that is a place when we talk about defunding the police and you say, we can't fire police officers and we say that's you're wrong and that's not illegal. Or you can't lay, you can lay people off for budgetary reasons. We also say you don't even need to literally lay people off and y'all just kind of ignore that. It's a little confusing because you've already proven that you agree with us that we can reduce the number of police officers by simply not filling positions. So I just think that's a problem. And I also think it's a problem to just accept that you can't fire people when they are like violating citizens' rights. So you've probably seen the report from public source that said, you know.
The next speaker is Catherine Vargo. Catherine Vargo. The next speaker is Luke Watkins.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to thank you for having me. I would like to point out, it's a bit ironic for you to ask us to be early to sign in, but you cannot be on time. Anyway, a favorite phrase of Joe Biden's, who I'm assuming you all support, is if you show us your budget, I'll show you your values. $1 of every of every $5 of this budget goes towards the police. And as others have pointed out, this this police department has problems with violence and with sexual misconduct and certainly with racism. So I'm asking, does this city value sexual misconduct? Does this city value violence? Does it value racism? I don't know. You can decide that. I would just like to share a story before I yield my time. I was a demonstrator at the incident at Mellon Park where the police attacked us. After chasing us out of the neighborhood despite neighborhood support to the street. Then they told us to get off the street and onto the sidewalk. So we did. And they told us to get off the sidewalk and into the park. So we did. And then they told us the park was closed and they attacked us with black activists burying the brunt of the violence. No amount of reform or additional funding is going to is going to fix that. Fund the police by 50%, tax UPMC and stop the station. I yield my time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Grant Jones.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I would like to first thank the city council for holding this meeting and giving an opportunity for citizens who are unable to attend the previous meetings to say their piece. I wanted to attend the previous meetings, but I personally could not as I was teaching. I've lived in the Pittsburgh area my entire life and I currently work as a teacher with Pittsburgh Public Schools, although I am here today in a personal capacity, I would like to note. I like money callers and testifying an opposition to the current budget proposal and in favor of defunding the police. The slogan should really be defund the police partially and spread that funding amongst education, housing, healthcare, public works, but that's a lot less catchy. And I could start off my argument with any of the common statistics, such as the fact that black residents make up 23.2% of the Pittsburgh population, but are disproportionately represented in traffic stops, frisks, unwarranted searches and seizures and arrests. But I think the best thing that I could do is speak to my experience as a member of the Pittsburgh community and to my work as a teacher. As someone working in public education, I can say that despite the tireless and inventive work of my amazing colleagues at PPS throughout this crisis, we still need more funding and support. I've seen our schools be a massive community resource through grab and go days, but I have also seen shortcomings when school had to be delayed a week because not all devices could be distributed. I have, you know, felt frustrated with a lack of funding for sending music class supplies home to kids. And I have spoken to students who have complained of having no food at home and come in hungry. Even outside of my work at the schools, I've seen the toll this pandemic has taken on Pittsburghers. I know many people, my close friends and family members who have been out of work for months. I have spoken to a citizen who is now being evicted for the second time this year. So with all due respect to the city government, it feels incredibly tone deaf to give police the largest share of the budget in six years while cutting everything else. To do this after a summer of outcry against injustice and policing and the criminal justice system to propose this budget after Pittsburgh police spent 2020 brutalizing protesters and using tear gas to raise the budget share of an organization that let Paul Abel remain within its ranks for so long. That seems ludicrous to me. Our focus should be on aiding the unemployed and those who may be evicted when the CDC moratorium expires. Instead, the budget lays off 630 people. There are simple fixes to this, like not replacing the police officers who are set to retire this year or simply reducing police funding to its 2016 level, which would free up $10 million or not relocating the Zone Five Police Station to East Liberty. I understand the very real concern many Pittsburghers, including those in the black community, have about violent crime. And a way to halt violent crime is necessary, but it is not necessary that police take up this much of the budget, especially in an era when so many Pittsburghers have concerns about police. In closing, one of the best ways to prevent crime is to halt the conditions of poverty that lead to crime. I hope the council will consider revising the budget and I yield my time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Carolyn Speranza.
Hi, everybody. I'm here today with a fairly unique view of what's at stake in determining allocation of city budget funds to Pittsburgh police as compared to other services for city residents such as social services. Since last March, my husband, who has a master's degree in social work and is a caseworker for Presley Ridge, has been working out of our home. This means I have overheard and directly witnessed many conversations that he has had with people in need. These are people who are dealing with mental health issues, the threat of losing their housing, recent job loss, drug addiction, the absence of food in their homes, disabilities, and many, many issues dealing with their kids who are usually teens. Overlapping with these issues are the complexities of identity and community standing, which includes race, class, sexual and gender orientation. My point here is that to work effectively and in a way that truly supports populations of people in need, you really do need highly specialized training from the social services field. This is training that your average police do not have. Their job is to enforce the law, and I would like to underscore the word force. All too often, police use force in situations where the type of support provided by a social services professional is what's needed and would keep Pittsburgh residents out of the courts, out of jail and out of harms way in direct interaction with a police officer. In listening to the conversations he has and seeing the work my husband does, I am struck by the way he gets people back on their feet and in action where they can take action as well as connecting them with highly specialized specialized resources for people in need. This is not something that police are trained and educated to do. Regarding Pittsburgh's operating budget, I would like to see the currently proposed amount of funding for city police to be decreased by half and reallocated towards social services, public sector jobs and housing. Very often, our public health is our mental health, and this should be addressed as well with these reallocated funds. These areas are particularly in need of financial resources as a result of the pandemic crisis. City police are not. I would also like to add that organizations like Presley Ridge routinely partner with Allegheny County on various initiatives. There is no reason why they couldn't do so with the city of Pittsburgh. Thank you. I live in Brookline 15226, Anthony Coghill's district.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Alexander Ornstein.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Alexander Ornstein from 15201. And I'm sure these numbers have been cited in multiple meetings, multiple times. I'm going to state them again because it highlights how our current police system is racist. While black residents make up only 23.2% of Pittsburgh population, they experienced 44% of traffic stops, 71% of arrests, 69% of all warrantless search and seizures, 63% of all arrests conducted by Pittsburgh police in 2019. While the population of Allegheny County is less than 13% black, the population of the Allegheny County Jail is 67% black. These statistics show a clear and consistent bias against the black members of our community. They're frequently targeted and incarcerated by our police force. Things can't go on like this and our police force needs to be reevaluated, not given permission to continue as usual by receiving almost no budget cuts. In addition, our police force as it stands is disproportionately larger than our city's need for them. Pittsburgh is one of the most heavily policed of the 77 medium-sized US cities, ranking ninth out of 77. Violent crime rates, Pittsburgh ranks about in the middle, so it doesn't explain this police presence. If Pittsburgh ranked in the middle of the pack for the number of police officers per 10,000 residents, it would have about 19 police officers per 10,000 residents, not the current 31. Reducing this number to reflect the violent crime rate would end up saving money just from the personnel slash salary and wages regular line item alone would be a savings of nearly $24 million. While this type of reduction may not be possible immediately, it shows a framework for reallocating money from policing to pressing community needs. Now, Mayor Petuto has produced no decrease in the number of police officers in Pittsburgh. All proposed staffing cuts within the police force are on the civilian side. This misses an opportunity to reduce police staffing through the high rates of retirement, as members of the community have stated earlier. Police have for too long been the catch-all for any civilian problem from the view of the city. Issues such as mental health, homelessness prevention and domestic abuse support have all started to fall into the purview of police duties. As the saying goes, when your only tool is a hammer, every problem starts to look like a nail. The main tools in the arsenal of the police are violence and incarceration, both of which precipitate great harm to those that affect. Therefore, by having police respond to nearly every problem, the city is actively harming its residents. A solution to this is to shift additional funding from the police to the Office of Community Health of Community Health and Safety to ensure qualified staff are hired to address the aforementioned issues. This will reduce the workload of police officers and contribute to community safety and prosperity by breaking the cycle of poverty incarceration. Additionally, UPMC must be taxed as it's observed that they make billions off of the citizens of Pittsburgh, yet they don't contribute a dime to the city. Thank you. I yield my time.
The next speaker is Emerson Geisler.
Hello, can you hear me? Sorry, one second. I'm so sorry, one second. My name is Emerson Geisler. I am a social worker working in housing. I am. I am a lifelong resident of Pittsburgh and a fourth generation Pittsburgher. I'm commenting today because I want to oppose the projected budget. And ask for much deeper cuts to policing in this city. As someone who works in housing, there is a severe lack of affordable housing in the neighborhood of East Liberty where the relocation of the Zone Five Police Station is being considered. And I am wondering why in the middle of a pandemic, there is a consideration to cut emergency medical services by 17%. While anyone in this city who has interacted with the police can tell you that they not only do not make us safer, but actively endanger us. As the officers in this city do not wear masks or wear them incorrectly and are belligerent if you ask them to wear them correctly. We know this because 100 police officers in this city had to quarantine due to COVID, not because they're higher risk, because I also work in person, but because they don't take health seriously. For the council members who view cutting the budget as outrageous, I would like to say that those of us in the city who are doing abolitionist work are making sure that we are already addressing the violence that happens in our city and reducing our reliance on the police because police don't reduce violence. I expect the government of the city to serve its constituents. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jacob Klinger. Jacob Klinger. Next speaker is John Lavacare.
Hello. I just want to join the calls of dozens of other people on this call to reallocate funding from police to social services to defund the police, whatever you want to call it. It seems like that's not going to happen. And as many others have brought up, it's not an easy thing for you all to do, and I understand that. But I'm left with a question for for council and for my representative councilperson, Strasburger. I imagine that that many of you here think the people calling for defunding the police represent a vocal minority of the population. And whether or not that's true, it seems undeniable that a significant and growing portion of the public has lost faith in the Bureau of Police. And that's a huge problem. And I don't understand why it doesn't inspire our elected officials to take more drastic action than they have. Creating little pilot programs is not going to address that distrust. And while I'm glad that Paul Abel was sanctioned, sanctioning one individual bad apple is also not going to address that distrust. The distrust is sown by the department that allowed Paul Abel and dozens of other officers to commit misconduct after misconduct for years with no accountability. So my question for you all is how do you plan to address that distrust? And I think that it requires drastic action.
The next speaker is Avery Finegold. Avery Finegold. The next speaker is Eva Conrad. Eva Conrad. Next speaker is Ian Riggins. Ian Riggins.
Sorry, still muted. My name's Ian. I live in Morningside, zip code 15206. Thanks for holding this hearing on a Saturday, but I do hope you continue to hold more public budget hearings that are more accessible to working people in the future because one accessible hearing with 48 hours notice is not enough. Can't let this go. Before this started, council- Can't let this go. Before this started, Councilman Coghill said, "Give me the bad news. How many speakers?" It's truly incredible to hear just so here all the most significant concerns. The knowledge and number of people that are hearing the bad news from playing the viewer concerns. So Councilman Coghill, I'm going to let as many people know about your blasé attitude toward this hearing as I can, and I hope other people do as well. I'm sure you'll explain it away as a joke, but so is your reasoning that Pittsburgh needs more police than other cities because we have more hills. What I'm really here to do is ask the city council amend the proposed 2021 budget to defund the police by at least 50% and reallocate that money to departments and programs that will actually help people in the midst of a historic pandemic, particularly democratically-owned, permanently affordable social housing. We need an anti-racist budget that addresses Pittsburghers' urgent material needs, not one that continues to bloat in the power of violent incompetent police force. Report after study after report has demonstrated how overpolice Pittsburgh's black communities are despite city councils and the mayor's claim that our police force is one of the best trained in the country. Listen to this. Black children accounted for 100% of all warrantless search and seizures of children's ages 10 and under. A recent public source report shows that a single police officer has been the subject of 119 allegations of misconduct that have reached the city's Office of Municipal Investigation since 2010. 22 officers had five or more accusations against them sustained. Most officers, around 600, had between one and four allegations investigated by OMI since 2010. The police do not make our communities safer. Their violent, sexually aggressive, racist behavior terrorizes our communities. Again, speakers before me have pointed out data that demonstrates this. And the fact that the budget drastically cuts everything but the police when people need jobs, healthcare, good public education, and safe affordable housing is just an insult. Addressing these needs will make our community safer than the police ever could. We keep getting the response that you can't defund the police or that it's somehow illegal. And admittedly, no expert on the legality of the matter, but in the wake of these responses, plenty of people have pointed out that it simply isn't illegal if you take the bold and maybe even politically risky steps needed. And we're tired of hearing what you can't do. We aren't getting any responses about what you can do. How can you help people struggling in the city? How can you reduce police terrorism of black people in Pittsburgh? I think you know.
The next speaker is Matthew Crowen.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. I'm Matt Crowen. I am an East Liberty resident. I don't have a lot of time, so I'll just thank you for having this on a Saturday and apologize that I'll have to speak so quickly. So I wanted to start with a story. A couple of years ago, before this whole COVID thing, I volunteered to spend a school year teaching a morning class at a high school in the Hill District doing computer science because they didn't have teachers who were equipped to do that. I was just helping out with this twice a week. We what I saw was a drastically under-resourced school system, or at least school, which is, you know, part of our responsibility as a city. They had, we had kids not having their schedule figured out until halfway through the year because they didn't have enough people to work out schedules. They didn't have supplies. The teacher I was working with had to buy their own, keep it under lock and key, and devilishly guard their pens. It's kind of the Pittsburgh promise, send kids off to college, which Pittsburgh promise is great. I love it. It's awesome. But kids were being talked into using it to go to college whilst not understanding the other loans that they were being, that they were signing up for. You know, the difference between subsidized and non-subsidized loan. That's something that we could fix with a financial literacy seminar to go along with the money. And COVID has undoubtedly made these things worse. So fast forward to now, we've all spent the summer talking about how much we want to prevent incidents like what happened to George Floyd. And proposals that I've heard have been, we're going to increase police recruiting by trying to get young people early, which really seems to me like treating symptoms rather than the cause, which is an expensive and dubious path. We've had bans on chokeholds and more power to the police oversight committee is great, but we have a stronger mandate than that, you know, given that the referendum in November passed. People very clearly want to see police scaling less than linearly with population. The more people we have, the less police per person we should need in a healthily grown city. And we're not moving in that direction. I'm seeing the Office of Equity, Youth, and Education is having their budget slashed by 25%. If we took that supply budget that's being cut by 75% and put it on Clorox wipes, that would be money well spent. But one of the major arguments that I heard this summer against changing the methodology of police, Mrs. Kale Smith, I believe you brought up your own difficult experiences at one point and how you were glad to have a police able to respond quickly.
The next speaker is Jacob Samagi. Jacob Samagi. Next speaker is Patrick Wishon.
Hi, so my name's Patrick Wishon. I'm a resident of Bloomfield. And I want to start off by thanking the council for holding this meeting at a more accessible time. I wish more people could have made it. And I also want to address what Councilman Coghill said before the meeting, that it's bad news for there to be 56 speakers. But I would actually frame it as that you should be grateful that your constituents care enough to get involved in this process and demand better from you and for our city. From what I've seen, the past three meetings I've attended, your disregard for what your constituents have been demanding is appalling. What Pittsburgh needs and wants isn't the reinforcement of an apartheid state from overpolicing. What Pittsburgh needs and actually wants is affordable democratically-owned housing. What Pittsburgh needs and wants is stopping police expenditures like relocating to the Zone 5 police station. What Pittsburgh needs and wants is taxation on UPMC to bring money back into the community from the city's largest employer. Saying things about hills in sports doesn't actually convince anyone about the over 60% more police than we have in similarly sized cities. As discussed earlier, Denver also has hills in sports and yet touts a lower police employment rate. Police are using cars. They aren't hiking up the hills. So if you actually care about the overpolicing of the black community and continue to turn a blind eye, like so many of you have so far, you're complicit in a racist system that tears apart families and ruins lives. Referenced earlier in this call was data gathered by the Abolition Law Center that actually states that Pittsburgh has a criminal punishment system that meets the legal definition of apartheid because of the way it's sanctioned by the government at every jurisdictional level. You are participating in a crime against humanity and against the people that chose you to fight for them. Over 200 officers are eligible for retirement this year. And the fact that not one of you seconded Councilwoman Gross's proposal last week to cut nine and a half officer positions to help fund causes that will find safe housing for people amongst a number of other things that would help Pittsburghers is disgusting. You should be ashamed of yourselves for doing nothing to stop this cycle and instead sitting by and watching. This is one of your last chances to actually make a positive impact on the community with this budget. I yield my time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Josh Chamberlain.
Okay, hi, everyone. My name's Josh. My pronouns are he/him. I live in East Liberty 15206. I'm actually right near where you want to relocate the Zone 5 police department. I haven't been able to come out to any of these meetings because I work full-time and I can't take off on a Tuesday at 10:00 AM. So I thank you for holding this meeting at an accessible time. I hope that in the future, you will take working people into consideration earlier in the budget process and give us more accessible times to participate in this budget that so greatly affects us. Now, I can say firsthand, and in conversations I've had with my neighbors, we do not want more of a police presence. No one does. Young folks, families with children, even many elders of the community, and especially the black and POC immigrant families who I'm close with. The other day, I was giving my neighbor a lift to the Giant Eagle and then to the Costco, and we were standing outside while two police officers took up the middle of the street talking loudly. The whole atmosphere of the neighborhood turned sour. On my block, we greet each other and are always friendly. We have cookouts, and we know each other's kids. When the police are around, everyone rushes to their cars and into their houses. It was the most uncomfortable I've been on my sidewalk since we lived in a police state under Perdido's curfew this summer. No one wants the thin blue gang just roving around, mostly in black neighborhoods, intimidating folks. They don't need more funding. And let's not forget about the atrocities committed against Pittsburghers earlier this summer when they used tear gas on peaceful protesters and then lied about it in a press conference. Then they intimidated people who had video evidence afterward. This is terrifying. How is this the group that you want to fund, not the citizens who are struggling in the midst of a global pandemic? This budget is atrocious, as the speakers earlier have said. How are you ignoring the citizens struggling right now, instead making sure your grunts can roll around in armored personnel carriers? How could you, in good conscience, choose to fund the overly aggressive outsider police instead of the people who call this city home? I urge you to consider divesting from the police and investing in the people. I yield my time.
Next speaker is Randall Taylor. Randall Taylor. Next speaker is David Turner.
Hello there. Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Hi, my name is David Turner. I'm a software engineer that lives in the 10th Ward of Pittsburgh, zip code 15201. I want to start by thanking Deb Gross for being the sole opposition to the budget and for basing the funds on the police. I also am calling in support to defund the police by at least 50%. Some information about me, I moved to Pittsburgh in 2010, moved to the 10th Ward in 2011. I've watched this neighborhood change over the years, and I've heard from lifetime residents the ways that it's changed, the ways that it was unsafe, the ways that it's gotten better. And through my conversations with them, everything seems to be clear that that came through zero effort from the police itself. That came from the community. That came from nonprofits like Lawrenceville United and the other one, oh my God, that did the land trust in Lawrenceville as well that Deb Gross supported. I just wanted to say that the police doesn't exactly make me feel safe here. I'm a taxpaying citizen, and this summer I had friends get tear gassed by the Pittsburgh police. I witnessed through social media someone organizing protesters get kidnapped in a car. And it really calls into question what the function of our police is. They're not here to protect. They're here to enforce. And I think we should divert those funds into supporting the people. We should be supporting things like housing. We should be supporting things like education. We should be offering people relief in a time of need where many people are without work. And I thank my friends that put their health at risk during a time of COVID to peacefully protest the police violence that has been seen across this nation. And I hope that you reconsider that funding and put it towards something that actually helps people. I yield my time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jennifer Valentino.
Hello, I live in Greenfield for the past 10 years before I lived in the South Hills. I would love to know from each of you, I could assume that your concern with the budget is public safety. But I would love to know how you think that funding the police promotes public safety. I feel less safe when police around, not more safe. And I'm white. I know how terrified black people are of police. And for that to go unchecked, as long as it has, is unforgivable. It needs to be done. And by no means does an organization with a record as horrifying as our police department is get rewarded with an increased budget. By no means. If you want to be safe, you need a house to live in. If your concern is safety, then your concern should be affordable housing for everyone in this city. And to afford even an affordable house, you need to have a job, which means you need to have had an education. So for you to have defunded, the lack of educational funding, as the man who said, who taught in Hill District for a year, is unforgivable to not allow schools to have enough funding to be able to schedule students and get supplies and pay teachers adequately. The lack of funding for basic needs so that people can get an education, can get a job, don't go to prison for invalid reasons so that they can get a job and afford housing. This is where the priority of the budget was. This is a public safety budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Caitlin Kerr.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Coghill said in the last budget hearing that I think the people in the South Hills have a lot more common sense than that when referring to reducing the police budget by 50%. As a resident of the South Hills, I'd like to address that statement today. I am a nurse by trade. I am also a disabled person, which means I naturally have an interest in reallocating budgetary funds in a way that could have positive effects on transportation, reducing healthcare company monopolies, and improving affordable housing and job availability and flexibility. As a former employee of UPMC, it sickens me to see their profits skyrocket while I look at my own budget as a person on SSDI and see that I've still paid over $25,000 out of my own pocket this calendar year on healthcare costs. And no, I don't make that much money. That is coming out of my retirement account. And so I urge the taxation of such corporations and big developers. And yes, I'm also here for the lives of my black friends, which directly are affected by the police budget and Zone 5, make no mistake. I fully support stopping Zone 5's relocation and all police-related infrastructure projects and purchases. And the redistribution of these funds to serve as an immediate form of economic stimulus in terms of food and basic services created and controlled at the local level, given the federal government's failure to craft any sort of significant aid package. A common critique, as we've heard in previous hearings of defunding officers would lose their livelihoods, but there are so many other options, which might include positions in mental health and educational services, healthcare, city hall. I want to clarify that when I say "defund," I mean reallocation and demilitarization, not like what has been happening in education when we are already stripping a depleted body. We'd be removing bloat to the benefit of other much-needed services. We also want to remove police access via budget to oppressive and military-grade weapons that are only ever used to suppress and terrorize citizens on a large scale and not the funding that's required for day-to-day policing. My partner, the son of a retired police chief, tells me that with these actions, what we would be doing is spreading the wealth of a war chest, not stripping the already underprivileged. Vote against this budget. Reduce the police budget by 50%. Yes, 50%. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Amber Ohio-Cupay. I'm sorry if I pronounced your last name wrong. Amber.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. Hello. Hello.
Hi, continue. Yes, continue.
And I'm a Black woman living in the North Side. I moved to Pittsburgh in 2009 and was excited to become part of a community that was growing and changing. However, my pride for the city has vanished while watching the progression of the white agenda and the blatant disregard for the deeper to Black community through housing, health, and social services. Reading this budget was a nail in the coffin for me. Increasing the police force budget and not reallocating funds to the much-needed social services. After a summer of constant protests, people leaving their home, safety of their homes, to protest against police brutality, and this is the budget. Pittsburgh's police force has failed us time and time again, endangering members of our community, and this is the budget. There's a global pandemic that has stripped people of physical and financial freedom, and this is the budget. I can't raise my family here if these are the priorities. This is not the leadership our city needs. Please adjust this budget to reflect our community values, providing support for the most vulnerable members of our community, not encouraging this grotesque performance of the Pittsburgh police. Defund the police, tax UPMC, and stop the station. I yield my time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Stephanie Sorensen.
Hello, my name is Steph Sorensen, and I have lived in Greenfield for 15 years. I want to thank you for holding this meeting on a weekend, although more notice would have been helpful. As the parent of a Pittsburgh public school student, I haven't been able to attend prior meetings since they have been scheduled on weekday mornings when my child is home attending virtual school. He just turned seven, and while he is an incredible kid, he is unable to do schoolwork independently on a screen all day. Like so many other parents and caregivers in this city and around the country, especially women and especially people of color, I have been unable to work since the pandemic abruptly left my family without childcare since March. Pittsburgh has the opportunity to lead the way in our response to the challenges facing us due to the pandemic. This situation, as we have all heard too many times this year, is unprecedented. So why are we going ahead with a budget that follows the same course as in years prior? Why are we increasing the budget share of the police when our communities' needs are so great? Members of council, please explain to us, how will the police help us fight COVID, since Allegheny County now has the most rapidly growing case count in the state? How will the police help feed hungry Pittsburgh families when regional food insecurity has increased by 42% since March and food pantries are putting hungry people on wait lists? How will the police help house the homeless, given that hundreds have been evicted and thousands more face eviction and foreclosure in the coming weeks, in the winter, during a pandemic? How will the police help those without jobs find work in order to support their families when Pennsylvania's unemployment rate has jumped by more than 70% per week since the start of December? Members of council, it looks to us like you are giving up. If you don't like the term "defund the police," that's fine. We are asking you not to defund our public programs and services. We are asking you to seize this unprecedented moment of suffering in our community and lead us in the creation of real change. Take inspiration from the Seattle City Council, which recently passed a larger payroll tax on their city's biggest businesses and highest earners in order to meet the needs of their constituents. Take inspiration from the city councils of Allentown, Albuquerque, San Antonio, and others, who have created initiatives to address homelessness. Take inspiration from regular Pittsburghers who have had to get creative in finding our own solutions for loss of childcare, jobs, healthcare, income, housing, food, and so on. We are asking you to stop telling us about all the things you can't do and start telling us what can be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jordan Schwartz.
Hi, sorry guys, my bad. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Hello, council, thank you for having me here today. I appreciate the time to voice my opinion on the 2021 city budget at a time that does not conflict with my work schedule, despite having less than 48 hours' notice. I am a resident of Squirrel Hill South, and thus Councilman O'Connor is my councilperson, who I don't think is on the line today.
He's on.
Awesome, okay, thank you. Well then, hello, Councilman O'Connor. As you are the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety Services, I find it imperative that you take note of all the comments we are hearing here today and have heard at all previous public hearings on the proposed budget. Think of what signals you are sending to the people you represent, that instead of investing in their safety and welfare through funding affordable housing, social services, and public health initiatives, you would rather put all of this money towards creating a system of bullies to parade through our communities and intimidate us. Instead of seeking to truly help and heal communities in need, you would rather reinforce an antiquated system of power. This is not the Pittsburgh that I want to live in. The 2021 budget must be reimagined to do the following: immediately halt all police-related infrastructure projects and purchases in the capital budget, including the relocation of Zone 5's police station to East Liberty. Instead, invest in democratically-owned, permanently affordable social housing. Cancel the cuts and decrease the Pittsburgh Police Bureau budget by at least 50%. Instead, relocate these funds to save hundreds of other public sector jobs and further fund housing, social services, and public health initiatives. Tax big business and corporate developers, and strip UPMC of its tax-exempt nonprofit status to address an ongoing budget crisis, and fully fund well-paid union jobs, housing, and public education. These are the elements of the proposed budget that must be changed in order to create a truly livable and safe Pittsburgh for all of its residents. I know there are members of council that probably took these positions because they believed they truly wanted to have a positive impact on their community. I urge those of you who identify as such to reflect on your internal biases and divest from the antiquated idea that we need the police to protect us. Thank you, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Julia Martin.
Hello, council, thank you for giving us time to speak to you today. I am a public librarian, a proud member of United Library Workers, and a resident in the neighborhood of Garfield. When I lived in a predominantly white neighborhood, I rarely saw the police, but now that I live in a predominantly Black neighborhood, I see and hear the police daily. In fact, if you had unmuted me three minutes earlier, you also would have seen and heard the police in the background of my voice. My conversations and my work are frequently interrupted by sirens. What I don't see or hear the week after 18 inches of snow fell were plows. My street still has not been plowed this week. And if I didn't have the facts and figures in front of me, and I hadn't heard all my fellow Pittsburghers giving testimony today, that alone would clue me in that our city's budget priorities are way off balance. This budget is uncaring and unneighborly, which doesn't sound to me like Pittsburgh. We're not doing a good job of taking care of each other, and we can do a lot better. I want my tax dollars to go towards infrastructure, education, health and social services, investments which raise the quality of life for me and my neighbors. We can do better, you can do better, and I expect you to rise to the occasion and change this budget around. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Leigh Burkhart.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome, thanks. My name is Leigh Burkhart, resident of 15219. I'm here to say that the 2021 budget is a disrespect and disregard of the wishes of so many people of Pittsburgh. The call for defunding the police is not new, and as others have said, those that make the calls to defund and abolish the police are not a delusional minority. There are many of us, and we come from many walks of life. During this session, we've heard from so many social workers, teachers, parents, students, the working class, young and old. And in a lot of ways, I can see similarities between the past few city council hearings and my experiences over the greater portion of 2020. I'm speaking specifically to my experience of joining hundreds of my lovely neighbors in the streets all over Pittsburgh. We marched and we chanted, "No justice, no peace, no more racist police." Did you hear it? We danced and we cared for one another, and we chanted together, "Defund the police and refund the people's peace." And we were met with violence, with terrifying threats to our safety. A lot of this here has felt terrifying. I watched a friend get abducted by armed agents and dragged into an unmarked van on Pitts campus. We were lured into false promises of having our voices heard, all during a global pandemic, which has so many of us unemployed, unhoused, unfed, or at risk of those things. To be more explicit, many Pittsburghers have joined together in the streets and now in these city council hearings to say the same things. And still, we are met with opposition by the people who are supposed to advocate for us. I'm echoing what everyone else has said here today: defund the police and refund the people's Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Nicole Hall.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Nicole Hall, resident of the North Side, part of Bad News Today. Thank you to the speakers who came before me and to my fellow Pittsburghers who are providing public comment in this meeting. First, I want to say that it's still not enough, what you've done to publicize these hearings. It should not be up to working citizens to spread the word about city council hearings. Not everyone is online. With that much time to get the word out, how is this meeting supposed to do anything but serve as an example of how the city government continues to systematically disenfranchise huge portions of the Pittsburgh community? I'm privileged enough to have heard about this and to have the time today to speak. That's why I'm able to be here. What about the people who can't afford internet right now, or who have urgent personal issues, like being worried about getting evicted? What about essential workers who are at work today? They can send in comments, but I think we all know about the impact of showing up to a meeting. The Alliance for Police Accountability wants the police budget cut by at least 50%. I agree. I understand that there are budget shortfalls due to the pandemic. Because we have these budget shortfalls, cutting the police budget is even more urgent. I'm going to quote Brandy Fisher of the Alliance for Police Accountability. Our priorities need to change if Pittsburgh is going to address our city's racial and economic disparities. We need more money for families in the middle of a public health and economic crisis, not more money for police. According to the Pennsylvania Budget and Policy Center, if you return the police budget to its 2016 level, you could redirect about 10 million to affordable housing. We're facing a housing crisis in the middle of a pandemic, and this is something that is in your power to do. As city council, you need to think of the people who you live among. You need to take care of this community and the people who actually live in Pittsburgh. Police officers aren't even required to live in the city, so I can't imagine why this council and mayor are more loyal to outsiders like the police than the people who actually live here. We don't need more violence, more arrests, a bigger police presence that terrorizes the Black and Brown and LGBTQ communities of Pittsburgh. We need housing, infrastructure, mental health services. Please revise the budget according to what the activists and residents of the city have been telling you we need. Black and trans lives matter. I yield my time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Julia Minty.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I live in Lawrenceville, and I'm a member of the United Library Workers Union as well at the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh. I work at the Library of Accessible Media for Pennsylvanians in North Oakland. As a library worker in this city, I have seen how the already inadequate social services and safety nets in this city have left the libraries to fill in the gaps our citizens feel by providing social work-level interventions, assistance with applying for unemployment, financial and food assistance, and not to mention that the libraries previously served as a place for our citizens without homes to spend their days, because we're lacking a whopping 20,000 affordable housing units in this city. This budget is a question of where our priorities stand, and Pittsburghers have been coming out to tell you, week after week, exactly where they lay. We know that we need to increase funding for the programs and services that support our communities, not the department that more often than not terrorizes and traumatizes us. We need to stop the incredibly pricey and wasteful relocation of the Zone 5 police station, and we need to defund the police by 50%. But everyone in this meeting, including council, knows that just defunding the police by the amount that their budget has been raised over the past five years will not be enough to build the city that we deserve. We need to tax UPMC and big corporations to fully fund the progressive, anti-racist budget that we are demanding. This council has argued that if we receive federal pandemic relief aid, the 600 jobs that are on the chopping block will be saved, but that's a horrendous abdication of your power. You're waiting for aid to come that is not guaranteed, and you're using your constituents' health, well-being, and livelihood as a bargaining chip in a losing game. Mayor Paduto posted an article this morning, which shows that federal aid is not guaranteed or even likely to come, and passing this irresponsible budget is going to leave working people to suffer. Also, many of you have said that you actually agree with our demands, especially demands to tax UPMC, but say that your hands are tied with legal obstructions. Well, it's your job to think creatively and to figure out how to get rid of the obstacles in your way of what you supposedly support. Through observing the city council meetings over the last few weeks, it's become abundantly clear to me that you are not going to listen to us and you're going to continue to dismiss our demands and call us outside agitators with unrealistic ideals. But the fact that you met one of our demands to schedule this meeting on a Saturday, even though it was with pitifully short notice, shows me that when we organize together with a united voice to put pressure on the city council, we have the power to win. 56 people signed up to speak with less than 48 hours' notice, that is incredible. And I want to thank everyone who has organized together to come and speak against this insulting budget proposal, and I look forward to being a part of the continued growth of this movement for accountability, equity, and justice in the city of Pittsburgh. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jessica Wasserlov.
Hey, good afternoon. My name is Jessica, my pronouns are she/her. I'm an IATSE union member and worker in the film and TV industry. My zip code is 15224, and I'm a resident of Bloomfield. I'm here to echo the demands of Stop the Station's efforts for an anti-racist budget, and to use my time today to detail what shifting the budget could look like. Out of the 77 medium-sized US cities, Pittsburgh is one of the most heavily policed, ranking nine. If Pittsburgh ranked in the middle of the pack, it would have about 19 police officers per 10,000 residents, not the current 31. That'd be a savings of nearly $24 million. While this type of reduction may not be possible immediately, it does show framework for reallocating money from policing to pressing community needs. The overpolicing in our city has not made Pittsburgh more livable. Black children account for 100% of all warrantless search and seizures of children ages 10 and under. Out of the 415 Black and White Allegheny County residents arrested on a misdemeanor charge, it was only the Black community members who were denied bond altogether. ALC Court Watch found that Black men who made up less than 7% of the county population made up 44% of all misdemeanor defendants. If landlords may evict again, the pent-up demand to evict could lead to nearly 2,600 evictions, which is 1% of Pittsburgh. This does not make me want to describe my home as neighborly or the most livable city. As councilperson Strasburger reported in a public safety document, the top five 911 calls are traffic stops, burglar alarms, parking complaints, welfare checks, and domestic violence. In most instances, armed police are not necessary to address these problems. The police have become a catch-all for many crises or cries for help. Greater investment in communities on the front end will lead to less need for intervention from police on the back end. We, as a society, have become accustomed to solving problems through militarization, incarceration, and force, when another way is possible. Residents across Pittsburgh have been asking for the mayor and city council to explore those other ways through preventative measures and restorative justice. There is an abundant need in our city, especially during this challenging year. I encourage voting no on this proposed budget until it actively invests in the good of the people, not designing a budget for assumed future transgressions. Thank you for having the Saturday hearing and for taking the time to empathetically listen to all of our public statements now, and for taking the time to process where our demands are later.
Our next speaker is Jill Kavaka.
Hi, my name is Jill Kavaka, she/her. I'm a resident of Friendship and a woman of color, which is apparently important to Ricky Burgess. I'd like to thank those who have taken the time to speak today, especially the translators and those from Stop the Station who have volunteered hundreds- and those from Stop the Station who have volunteered hundreds of hours to provide you resources and insight into what members of our community actually want and need. Um, I'd like to add my name to the long list of Pittsburghers calling to defund the police by reallocating those funds to other services like housing, education, and healthcare. How can we be the most livable city with waves of evictions this winter during a pandemic? We are holding you, the city council, responsible for your lack of effort to help and instead constantly trying to pass the buck. I'd also like to address the complaints made by Bill when this meeting started and he didn't know we could hear him um, about having to work a few hours on one weekend. You know, that really shows your privilege and that you clearly do not care about a large part of the community. You are hired to serve. Um, you should be ashamed of yourself. Uh, for everyone else on the council, right now, you are critical in helping us build a better, safer community for all, not just the upper and middle-class white people. I yield my time.
The next speaker is Mark Hallfelder.
Uh, hello, thank you all for your time. Uh, I'd like to thank the council for finally having a meeting that was barely accessible um, with some amount of notice. And wasn't held during a weekday when the vast majority of working people are unavailable. I would like to thank, uh, Councilperson Cogell for making it abundantly clear what he thinks of his constituents' opinions uh, with his comments before the meeting started. I would like to thank Councilperson Lavelle uh, for making it abundantly clear what he thinks of these proceedings, uh, given his cooking, texting, and disappearing from the screen for minutes at a time. Uh, I would like to lend my voice to the so far unanimous, uh, opinion of the commenters uh, that the city council should vote no on the proposed budget or amend it to defund the police by 50% and redirect that money to social work, education, social housing, and other things that will actually help the community. Police do not prevent crime. They do not make us safer. We saw this this summer, uh, when unmarked police officers kidnapped, uh, an organizer in an unmarked van and disappeared the person. We saw this this summer when police officers fired tear gas onto balconies uh, of people watching protests. We saw this this summer when police forcibly kettled people, gave an impossible-to-obey, uh, order to disperse, and then used that as a pretext to arrest people who were protesting their brutality. The police budget has gone up, uh, every year of Mayor Paduto's, uh, tenure from under 15% of the city budget in 2014 to nearly 19% and over 19% in the proposed budget, uh, for next year. I believe that's all I have to say. I yield the balance of my time.
The next speaker is Elizabeth Labaz.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, I'm Liz Labaz from Highland Park. I've been a Pittsburgh resident since 2001. Um, first, I appreciate you scheduling this additional hearing outside of typical working hours. Democracy works best when everyone can participate. I hope this is just the first of such accessible meetings and with more warning in the future. Um, I am here to urge the council to reject the current budget and replace it with an anti-racist budget that puts money in the departments that actually serve the people. There's been a lot of talk this year from Democrats about listening to science, believing experts, and listening to the data. I hope those are more than talking points because when it comes to keeping cities safe, the data is clear. Safety doesn't come from more police officers, more riot gear, or bigger tanks. Preventing crime is, like it sounds, preventative. It comes from spending money on social services, education, healthcare, and other departments that serve your constituents, not punish, harass, or assault them. The data is also clear that the residents of East Liberty do not want the relocation of the Zone 5 police station to the heart of its business district on Euclid Avenue. Mayor Paduto keeps saying that the people want the station there, yet can provide no evidence. Democrats cannot be the side of facts only when it is politically convenient. To cut funding from nearly every other department, including emergency medical and fire response during a pandemic, while allowing the police department to stay so financially bloated is not only irresponsible and ineffective, it is immoral. You can always see an organization's values by what it chooses to spend money on, and the city of Pittsburgh is clearly choosing to value crushing its constituents rather than lifting them up. I hope you will strongly reconsider. I yield the rest of my time, and thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Luke Andish. Luke Andish. Ben Shirtleft.
Uh, hello, I'm going to be, uh, echoing a lot of what people have been saying about halting the relocation of, uh, the Zone 5 station uh, and all police-related infrastructure projects, uh, decreasing the bureau's budget, uh, reallocating those funds to other areas, uh, receiving cuts like housing, social services, public health initiatives, and, uh, stripping UPMC of the, its, uh, nonprofit status, the fund well-paid, union jobs, housing, and public education. Um, I'm sure the council is tired of hearing a lot of the same things, but, you know, frankly, the rebuttals uh, that have been given in response haven't been, like, super convincing. Uh, defunding the police by 50% doesn't seem as radical as it's been painted to be when Mayor Paduto has raised it by that much since taking office, uh, especially since the increase in funding hasn't shown, like, to correlate in a meaningful, to a meaningful decrease in violent crime. Uh, you know, arguing we just need to reimagine or reform the police is, is just going to be empty rhetoric forever, uh, unless there's some material investment behind those words. Nothing is being reimagined if we continue to pour disproportionate amounts of the budget into, you know, a force that, where misconduct is repeatedly left unpunished. Uh, the mayor refuses to hold the police accountable, and they've been shown to antagonize black citizens disproportionately. Um, increasing the share year to year is just doubling down on the status quo. It reminds me of the definition of insanity, you know, doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result. And that's exactly what this budget is doing. Um, you know, there's also this, you know, sense of, oh, these citizens, they're so naive, they just don't know what police actually do. Uh, it's been well documented that most of the calls that police address really don't require an armed officer, right? This has been brought up before, like, what, like, animal control, construction, traffic officers who don't need to be armed, uh, and mo- most crucially, like, people with years of training in social work and substance abuse that is neither practical nor possible to uh, provide that training to all Pittsburgh's police officers. So, uh, instead of, you know, pretending you can make the police qualified to handle those issues, why not shift the responsibility and funding to professionals who exist to handle them? Um, why not invest in more proactive solutions like housing, education, and healthcare? You know, to provide people with the support they need that will turn them away from the possibility of crime in the first place. So, I think, you know, people without homes, with substance abuse issues, people who have lost their jobs due to the pandemic, people who are sick, uh, black Pittsburghers who are targeted disproportionately.
The next speaker is Kelly Henderson. Kelly Henderson. Sarah Paletti.
Oh, no, I couldn't find the unmute button. I'm here, I'm sorry.
Okay, Kelly first, and then we'll go to Sarah.
Oh, and now I minimize my talking points because I was looking for the mute button. Sorry, one second. It's hard to know when you're not going to be up next. I would really ask that we maybe announce who's going to be up after the next speaker as a preparation opportunity for folks to come after me, please. Um, I'm a resident and renter in East Liberty, 5428 Stanton Avenue, 15206. And before that, I lived in North Point Breeze on Thomas Boulevard. I'd like to remind Councilman Burgess that we've met before and worked together before in hopes that that will help him to hear me. I can't see his video. I hope he's still on the call. When I lived in North Point Breeze, I was on the Point Breeze North Development Corporation board, and along with, uh, Councilman Burgess's office helped to organize community meetings to get input on Lexington Technology Park redevelopment. I'd like to thank the council for scheduling this meeting outside of standard working hours. Please do more of this and provide more notice. I personally didn't have time to review the budget in full because of the short notice and would love to follow up with the council to give specific recommendations for how to reallocate and propose amendments with more time to review. I encourage the council members to oppose the projected budget and support amendments that will show deeper cuts for police and reallocation to social services. I'm a sustainability and education professional. I work in higher education for Chatham University, and I work with K through 12 students. I also teach as adjunct faculty, uh, on the topic of intergroup dialogue and the history of repression. Um, as part of my job, I facilitate conversations across race uh, and, uh, really make connections with folks, uh, on the issues, uh, between environmental and social problems, community development, housing, transport, food systems, the importance of systems thinking. I'm here today speaking as an individual and a resident of Pittsburgh and not speaking for my institution. Um, and I'm here to tell stories related to my work. I've heard from so many black and brown students that have shared their stories. Uh, when visiting Perry High School, I've seen librarians cooking rice for their students because their school lunch is underfunded and inadequate. I've heard from so many black and brown students, a desire for more teachers that look like them. This comes from valuing education, paying teachers more um, to increase interest amongst folks in the black and brown community to enter the teaching force. I heard Councilman Burgess at the end of the last public hearing refer to uh, the need for us to address major crimes as a reason for the police budget needing to be increased. Those examples of major crimes he gave were armed robbery and major drugs. Um, and if we're setting an evidence-based budget, we would know that people turning to selling drugs or armed robbery when uh, are those that are confronted with poverty with no visible pathway out of it. It's our job to provide a pathway, and your job as council members to uh, allow for more investment in those social services that create those pathways. Um, so, uh, I encourage the council to read, um, uh, sorry, one second. So, uh, at the end of the last public hearing, Councilman Burgess also said, uh, that the black community doesn't want to reduce the police budget. Um, I'm, uh, I'm hoping that Councilman Burgess has made it a priority to listen to black youth. Uh, as part of my job, I've hosted a number of, of youth panels on the topic of the connection between social and environmental issues. Um, and I've seen that many community organizations don't allow youth under the age of 18 to speak as part of their community engagement processes. And I'd like to also speak on behalf of a dear friend and a, a black, single-parent, uh, neighbor of mine.
The next speaker is Sarah Paletti. Sarah Paletti. The next speaker is Milo Davis.
Hi, um, so, I'm speaking from Arnold or New Kensington, parts of which some may consider the hood. Um, I guess I'm part of the mythical black community that would like to see less police. I'm also recently graduated from Pitt, working as a software developer, and am planning to move somewhere soon. Maybe deeper in the city, but then again, I'm not too happy about how my tax dollars are being allocated, nor am I too happy about how Pittsburgh police are treating certain people in the midst of everything going on. Throughout the history of this nation, my people have been marginalized and terrorized. Drugs were funneled into our communities to purposely perpetuate their miserable conditions. Then, seemingly justified by the resultant poverty and violence, as well as the notoriously racist farce that is the war on drugs. These minority communities were flooded then by roving gangs of cops. Now, rather than spending money on social services, education, and various other things that could actually help people and proactively address the conditions that give rise to crime in the first place, this council is instead intent on upholding this oppressive system in which police reactively shoot teenagers in the back as they run in the opposite direction. It's okay, though, I guess, because if by chance the officer is actually one of the good apples, unspoiled by the bunch, and the young man was a good enough boy that didn't happen to have a legal firearm or a nug of weed on his person, he'll just be suspect to our biased judicial process and overcrowded prison system, where he'll be able to be a literal slave because, thanks to this country's 13th Amendment, that's actually legal. So, I guess there's the motivation to make sure we keep artificially creating so many criminals out of the designated surplus undesirables of our society, AKA dark and/or poor of any color, while we sell to everyone else an idealized story of safety through law and order. They called the abolition of slavery too radical in the 1800s, and you're calling the abolition of our grossly unjust police and prison system too radical now. Not to mention every other movement like civil rights in the 1960s, led by the radical leftist riot insider Martin Luther King Jr. The progressive movement towards the improvement of people's lives is always considered radical until it happens through the will of said people, and then the moderates that once decreed the cause for change as impossible and unpopular will turn around and say how great it was that change happened. Today, in the year 2020, status quo obviously isn't adequate, and meaningless reforms that involve awarding an inherently oppressive, murderous, unaccountable force more money to spend on racial sensitivity training or rainbow banners for their cars or whatever else is not going to cut it. Giving them more money to harass black activists in their own homes for the crime of speaking out for their lives is absolutely not going to cut it. So I would hope you would align yourselves on the right side of history sooner rather.
The next speaker is Erin Swift. Erin Swift.
Hi, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, one of my friends was just passed over, so I was afraid that would happen to me. Um, I wanted to start by, initially, I wanted to start by thanking you all for holding this meeting on a Saturday, even though it was less than 48 hours' notice, but I actually don't want to thank you for that anymore. Thanks to the gentleman who commented first thing before the meeting started that, um, what is the damage? What is the bad news here? Sir, you should be ashamed. You are a public servant. You work for us, and I'm tired of having to remind you of that, as are a lot of people on this call. Uh, to continue, I'm confused why we have to continue to reassert the fact that we are actual citizens and community members that have rights, that have demands, and that have needs in this community. It's absolutely astounding when not a single person is dissenting, not a single person is saying, we don't want you to defund the police, and Bill Paduto happens to know all of them. I don't know if they have the direct line to his phone number. I would love to get that. But I am tired of being gassed with by this freaking government, frankly. I have been an educator for over a decade, and I have had more responsibility to keep my students and my community safe than any police force in, in Pittsburgh or any other city I've lived. It is frankly disgusting. I am making this call as I drive home on speakerphone to my hometown to drop off Christmas gifts in a pandemic, and I made this a priority, and yet we have people saying, oh, be careful what you say because everyone can hear what you're talking about. I, I think it's, I would frankly love to hear what everyone says when they're unmuted. I would frankly love to hear what is said behind closed doors. I am shocked and appalled that this is something that is being framed as a, an inconvenience for those elected officials. We are demanding that you defund the police by 50% of the money is there, um, and especially as an educator working in a field that is consistently defunded, where we are the ones spending money to keep our students safe and educated, and we can't even e- expect police officers to keep a mask over their nose. I yield my time because I'm tired of talking to you all.
The next speaker is Catherine Colwell. Catherine Colwell. The next speaker is Jenna Wetmore. Jenna Wetmore. Next speaker is Christopher Druring.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I live in Highland Park. Uh, quickly to start, I want to try to finish Holly Keen's thought from earlier. She was talking about some points in the budget. Namely, the point that Pittsburgh police will be working with the University of Pittsburgh School of Social Work. She has personally Social Work. She has personally spoken to the dean of that school, who told her that they have no ongoing collaboration with the police and that they didn't even know what the budget was referring to with that. So we can see that some claims made in this proposed budget are wholly untrue. I'm grateful for this meeting being held on a Saturday, but with that being said, I am not thankful to City Council for this. Holding public hearings on a weekend should be the bare minimum, something that we would expect as a norm in the system that we consider to be democratic and hopefully transparent. The scheduling of this meeting only after the City Council was forced to by a petition delivered to the City Clerk's Office and the less than two days' notice for it indicate that for some reason, you, the City Council, are still pushing back on changes that allow working people in Pittsburgh to give their input. Anthony Coghill's comment at the beginning of this call, give me the bad news, how many speakers, actually summarizes it very well. As others have said, the per capita number of police officers in Pittsburgh is far higher than comparable medium-sized cities. Some members of the City Council have embarrassingly attempted to explain this. For example, Coghill idiotically suggested that we need so many more police officers due to our professional sports teams and hills. I guess those hills and sports teams didn't exist in 2014 when the police budget was over $40 million lower. Is that the case, Anthony? In 2019, out of all crime reported to the Pittsburgh Police, barely 6% involved violent crime. Not only do Pittsburgh cops spend a very small amount of their time on violent crime, but they're also ineffective and incompetent at solving violent crimes. According to the Abolitionist Law Center's recent report on policing in Pittsburgh, in Pittsburgh, more than half of all murders went unsolved from 2010 to 2015, and 97% of those unsolved cases involve life victims. In sum, the peacekeeping role of the police is largely overstated, and even with a massive budget, police routinely fail to protect vulnerable communities. The police routinely fail to protect vulnerable citizens and, in fact, routinely commit violence and other harm against them. Defund the police and fund our communities. If this council cared to read a book, perhaps they would learn that there are far more effective ways of increasing public safety, address poverty, houselessness, and invest in social services and affordable housing. Act 265 lays out procedure for this. Almost 300 police officers are up for retirement. The refusal to second Councilwoman Gross's amendment last week really, really just takes away the right to make excuses. Furthermore, many of you have expressed that you would love to act GDMC but just can't. We're asking you to recommend renewed litigation to make this possible, something that this body absolutely can do. The federal eviction moratorium ends in less than two weeks. People can't afford rent. The weather is getting colder. Parents can't afford childcare and food. Medical and student debt continues to pile up. The pandemic is worse than ever. The list of struggles your constituents are facing goes on. Abandon your toxic and abusive relationship with the police and the FOP and actually do something for the working people and community.
And the last speaker is Bob Rosenthal. Excuse me. Bob Rosenthal. That exhausts the list, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. And I appreciate you going through the whole list. And if there's any way we can check and make sure that there was no one forgotten, because I heard somebody say somebody was passed over, but I'm reading the list as you're calling the names, and I've heard every name that was on this list. So I don't know how they were passed over unless they never made it into a registration list or something. So if they were passed up and they're listening, please email council@thecityclerksoffice. Madam Clerk, can you give that? Because I don't want to give the wrong email address for the clerk's office.
The email address is going to be cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that's what it is. Thank you so much. And I just want to thank, I'm going to turn it over to council members to speak, but I just want to thank the council members, myself, for being here on a Saturday. And as you go on with your lives at home and have your own challenges with childcare and things that you're doing. And you know, Councilwoman Lavelle and I messaged, texted one another, and he said he didn't want to turn his camera off because even though he was taking care of his children, he didn't want to be disrespectful to the commoner. So I want people to realize that sometimes what you see is not always what the reality is. And I want to thank the Clerk's Office for being here and the City Channel Pittsburgh folks and our Budget Office people for all being here on a Saturday. I appreciate it. And I do want to say a lot of this came about not because we were forced to by petition, which was, we can talk about that later, but because Councilwoman Strasburger has been adamant that we do something, some additional meetings, and Councilwoman Gross has been talking to me about it as well. And so I just think that the women of council and some of the other members of council have been saying that they'd like to hear different, provide different opportunities for people to speak. So I just want to say that, and I'm going to say a little bit more after, but I just want to start with that. And are there any members that would like to speak now? Like, Councilman Coghill?
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to thank all the callers. You know, I'll first start with addressing the comment that I made before the meeting. I said, I think I was talking to Madam Clerk, and I said, give me the bad news, how many callers? Okay, so, bad choice of words. I apologize. Wasn't meant to offend anybody. It was more of a joking way for me, a bad joke, I will say. But it was for a lot of reasons, but I want to make sure loud and clear that the people called in, I want them to know that it wasn't because of the content of what we're talking about. I take this matter very, very seriously. In fact, I was one of the first ones, I think, to step up and say, I will do a public hearing any day, anytime. I like the fact that it's accessible to people. That's why I'm here. I'm not required to be here. I canceled other engagements to be here, but I wanted to be here, even though I heard most of the callers before. And I did feel there was going to be a lot of repeat calls. But I appreciate their passion. Sorry if I offended them. Wasn't meant in those words, but, you know, I understand, bad choice of words. So, but that being said, I also want to remark on a couple other things that, you know, I think have been taken out of context. And for when these callers call in today and demand 50% cut in the police force, you know, I first think to the comments I made the other day that's been really put out there on the airways and twisted because we have sports teams, they said, and because we have hills, Coghill thinks we need more cops, okay? Especially when I sit down and speak to the people in my district in person, I think I get a much better perspective as to what your message is, and you will get one as to what my message is. And that was Alexa Schwartz. Carolyn and Ms. Kerr, if you're still tuning in, please contact my office. I'd like to talk to you in person to explain myself. But getting back to the things that were, that I said, facts that why Pittsburgh should not be compared to some of these medium-sized cities that we're compared to. If the callers can't acknowledge that the venues we have, not just the sports teams, the sports teams play at the venues, we also have concerts. We have a lot of things going on in this town that some of these other mid-sized towns do not have. And if you can't acknowledge that we need more police for that reason alone, you're not paying attention to us. You're not paying attention to me, okay? When I talk about the hills and the terrain, that's a fact. That's a study that was done in 2004 by the International Association of Chiefs of Police. Density of population, you know, this is a major factor when it comes to the amount of police that we have on the streets. And most of all, it's what are we asking for out of our police? You know, our police go, if you have a lawnmower taken from your backyard, our police are there making a report. The data that everybody brings to the table, you know, comparing us with the other mid-sized cities, you know, it could be very skewed. What are they asking of their police officers? Maybe they have social workers that are doing work already. Maybe they're ahead of the curve. I don't know that, but I do know the density of our population requires us to have more police. So I just want to clarify those few things. That being said, I do listen to these callers, okay? The fact that we're here today shows that we listen. I do hear very, very little resolutions from defunding the police. I think John Jenke Maines was the only one that really acknowledges that this is not so easy as to cut 50% from the police department. I think this council has been taking the police reforms, systemic racism, things that we know that we need to be better at and that we can change. I think that we have taken it head-on. We've not done it carelessly, however. Carelessly would be defunding the police 50%. So, you know, I hear you. I listen to you. Again, I apologize for my earlier comments. We're not really directed at you. It was directed more at a Saturday afternoon with other engagements. And, you know, times 56 people by three minutes and, you know, but I'm glad to be here, I got to tell you. And I'm all ears in talking to anybody who wants to be serious about it. But I can't take you seriously if you're talking about cutting the police department by 50%, okay? And I can't take you seriously if you're not taking my points as to why we need more police officers than Birmingham, Alabama. So with that said, I will turn it back to you, Madam President. Thanks.
Councilman Burgess, do you want to go?
I can. I have been fortunate enough to serve twice as Finance Chair, and so I think, I think all of council knows the budget. I think I know the budget as well as anyone. First of all, this will be the first time since I've been a member of council that we're probably going to have to do the budget twice. This budget is an austere budget. I'm not sure how much the public realizes this, that there's no cost of living adjustments in this year's budget. In actuality, our staff and the non-union staff will actually decrease because there is no cost of living, and we know things have went up. So actually, in many ways, our staff and all the non-union employees in the city are going to be now, this year, in this budget, actually having a salary reduction because there's no cost of living. What's going to happen, the Congress has said that it will not, in this stimulus activity, there is no money for state and local governments. If in the next four months or so, if there is no stimulus given directly to city, the city government, we're going to have to do that. We're going to do the second budget anyway. And when we do the second budget, that budget will significantly cut hundreds of employees from the city of Pittsburgh. There is no other option. And it will include police, but it will include a lot of other people. It will be the most significant thing we've done since we enter into Act 47. These are tenuous times. I have, I think, been as active as any person on council in terms of reimagining police. I am still there. I think we have to reimagine police. I do think in the future we'll have reduced police force, more efficient, more effective, and we'll have other alternatives. Those alternatives don't quite exist, but they will. And so this is going to be a process where we will right-size the police force, add new services, and other programming. But it's going to take patience, right? We've taken some resources already in bravery in council to reallocate some resources. We'll do that every year. And I think that's the prudent way. Also, as I've been saying, we cannot, without having this shortfall, which will be apparent when we redo the budget, we cannot fire police. We actually can't do it, even if we wanted to. It was, is something that they would simply, you know, go to an arbitrator and because of the law, it'd be immediately reinstated. And so what we're doing is not sexy in terms of public comment and public people, you know, putting money into public safety and the prevention programs that Councilwoman Lavelle and I have led along with council and putting 5% this year and 1% every year. It's not dramatic, but it's extraordinarily significant. This is the efficient, effective way. I guess because I've been, you know, I guess I'm the old man on council, right? I guess I view my role as to be a good steward and to do the right thing at all times. I know that's not popular, saying what the right thing is. I, you know, I understand that, but I think that's my role, to be a good steward. That's what I've been elected to do. I appreciate the excitement and the energy from all the speakers I'm talking to all. I do enjoy that. But we are forced to make these serious, significant decisions. And this budget is actually a shadow budget. It is the calm unless there is some bailout from the government before the storm. And that storm will be significant. It will be deep, and there will be pain that we have not seen in the city for many, many years. And so I look forward to this process. I look forward to the next process that will open up the budget probably in four to six months and do unfortunately what we'll have to do if not giving money from the government. So I just want to make it clear to everybody that this is not, we're in, this city of Pittsburgh is in crisis. We are right now in a crisis situation. This is the most dire our city has been since before, since we were in, went into Act 47. And we need to do everything we can to be fiscally responsible because the situation is extremely, COVID has put us in a dire emergency situation. And those who do not realize this, don't realize the budget. And so that's, those are my thoughts. Thank you for this moment.
Thank you. And Councilman Lavelle?
All right. Thank you, Madam President. I will apologize in advance if I repeat anything any other member has said. I believe right when Councilman Coghill started speaking, my screen froze, and so I missed a lot of what was said. And I caught the sort of the tail end of Reverend Burgess, so I apologize if I repeat anything that another member has already said. I think it's worthwhile, sort of giving a quick overview of some of the things council has actually done. As I listened to the speakers, a number of speakers asked us to tell them what we're willing to do and/or what we have done. And a number of speakers asked us to sort of do police reform matters of what we've actually already passed. And so I think it's worth sort of highlighting that after all the turmoil this past summer, after all the unjust deaths of a lot of black men and women to the hands of police, people were in the streets protesting. We heard them. And we began working on a police reform agenda, led by myself and Councilman Burgess, with the support of all council members. We passed a number of bills, and so I think it's worth just highlighting them. One, I believe a speaker mentioned, was we amended, passed legislation to amend the Home Rule Charter to strengthen the Citizen Police Review Board, which was passed, I believe, by over 80% of this city. We also created the Stop the Violence Trust Fund. We also passed duty to intervene legislation. Someone, one of the speakers asked us to demilitarize our police, and we actually passed a bill on the prohibition of military equipment. And so we did work on that. We also banned chokeholds. One of the other members, one of the speakers, excuse me, early on in the presentation, spoke about, it would appear that we actually believe what they're asking for. And I think that's true. We actually do believe in what the majority of speakers are actually asking us for, which is why we actually instituted a hiring freeze on our police and then transferred that money to the Stop the Violence Trust Fund. Because we do believe we probably need to reduce the size of our police force and reimagine how we're actually doing policing. It's also worth noting that that fund will now have $5.3 million in it this year, which will ultimately reach somewhere around $10 million over the next few years. And as of this past week, we actually amended the budget to move those dollars away from the Department of Police and into the Department of Public Safety to actually reflect our values, which is to help fund the Office of Community Health and Safety, which is, as members, as speakers, excuse me, have asked us to do, which is to fund social service issues so that police are not showing up to calls where police are unnecessary and unneeded, that we have social sufferers, workers that are showing up to those calls, that we have mental health specialists that are working with our homeless in other cases. We're also going to use those dollars to fund our group balance intervention work. It wasn't brought up on this public hearing, but at our previous public hearing this past Monday, there were a couple speakers who said crime and violence and homicides are at a 20-year low. So why do you need police? Well, one of the reasons that crime and violence and homicides is at a 20-year low is because this council body some years ago spent time investing in that. And we created the Group Balance Intervention Model, and we've been funding that, but we've only funded it at a fraction of what it should have been funded from the very beginning. only funded it at a fraction of what it should have been funded from the very beginning. And now this council is moving dollars over to that fund so that we can even go further than a twenty-year low and have, hopefully, no homicides within our city. Even one is far too many. But we're actually doing that work, and I think it's worth noting. There was another speaker who spoke about Act twenty-five and said, we've heard, they've heard us say that we cannot cut our police budget by fifty percent. However, state law says that actually we can. And he's right, we actually can, but he didn't go far enough. State law says we can if we're in a financial crisis. We are not allowed to fire police for political reasons. That is written into the bill. If this council were to, Monday, when we pass a budget, defund our police force by fifty percent, that would be a political decision of which we would, there would be drastic ramifications, of which we would have to go to court, of which we will be sued, and in a year where we have a shortfall of close to sixty million dollars, that is unwise. And as the fiscal stewards of our dollars in the city, that would not be a smart decision for us, because those police, every one of them would ask to absolutely have to come back to the police force, and we would have to pay for that, and we'd have to pay for those court costs. What, so to his, to the speaker's point, unfortunately, we do not have the ability, unless we're in a financial crisis, and our budget is balanced. So our ballot, our budget does not demonstrate a financial crisis. As I was coming back into this call, I heard Reverend Burgess talking about what may happen in four to six months from now. If we do not receive federal assistance, we will absolutely then be in a financial crisis, and is it that time that we will have to reduce our police force? Also, again, heard many speakers talk about why we won't tax UPMC. Unfortunately, for the same reason we cannot cut our police force by fifty percent, is the same reason we cannot tax UPMC. This council does not have the ability to create any new tax. The city of Philadelphia created a tax on sugared, on sugary drinks. We do not have that ability. But for all those who called in Monday, for all those who have called in today, for all those who have emailed, I believe if each one of you were to go get an additional person, join us to go to Harrisburg to lobby, to demand that our state legislators give us that ability, as soon as they would give us that ability, I believe this council would pass a tax on our large nonprofits tomorrow. We would pass a payroll prep tax tomorrow, and we would have then immediately begin to re-envision how we fund things within our city. And so I would ask for everyone who cares about that to reach us, to reach out to us and let us know if and when you'd be willing to travel to Harrisburg to have that message once we come out of this COVID crisis. Lastly, there were a number of speakers who spoke about an anti-racist budget and asked us to do anti-racist work. And again, I think it's worth articulating, for those who may be unaware, what we have done in the last year to actually be anti-racist. This council declared racism as a public health crisis. We did that, I believe, over a year ago now. This council passed legislation declaring that Black Pittsburgh does indeed matter. Coming after that, we also passed legislation on the Ten Commitments of Racial Equity. We also commit, created a commission on racial equity. We also created an all-in investment fund so we could directly fund initiatives that would go towards anti-racist work and specifically uplifting the black community, which is amongst the poorest in the country. So yes, we openly recognize that the police aren't doing that work, do not make, do not do anti-racist work, which is why we've passed all these other pieces of legislation. And again, I would welcome all those who have called into this meeting to reach out to us, to ask how can they be supportive of those various pieces of legislation that will go a long, long way of, hopefully, bringing our community out of poverty, specifically the African-American community. Lastly, a number of speakers spoke about the schools and how we need to fund the schools. I agree wholeheartedly with their sentiments. However, there's a separation of government. However, we don't have jurisdiction over, over our schools. But what I will say, as a parent of two, who, my children are in Pittsburgh Public Schools, it is an issue that I care dearly and deeply about. I've said to anyone who will listen, this city is only as strong as our school system is, and I have dire concerns about it. And so for all those who are, again, asking this council to deal with the schools, I would again ask you to reach out to me. We can have a conversation about what I'm doing in the school system, and I would ask you to then spend an equal amount of time addressing the actual school board, whose budget is larger than the city of Pittsburgh's, and ask about how they're dealing with racial equity within their schools, how they're dealing with these issues. And I would love to have a conversation with all of you about that. I believe those are the comments that I remember most from the, those who've joined us today. Lastly, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to all those who joined us. Thank you for all those who provided public input. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Lovell. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Madam President. And, you know, I thank everyone here on this call today that came and spoke and been listening to you, been researching all these issues to understand them and how this city really moves forward. With all of this in mind, in a time of a pandemic, on which we will have to, like other members have said, come back a second time and reevaluate this budget. It's not easy right now, and you can hear the, the pain on, you know, from the callers, I'm sorry, from the speakers today about what they witnessed. And it's powerful to hear how active people have been and to understand just how, just how much need there is, really, for this conversation. So I appreciate everyone taking the time. You know, some callers have come before, so people, you know, have taken multiple opportunities to come and express the way they feel about this current budget. I've wrestled with this for quite some time on, on, you know, what this conversation means. And so I've taken it very seriously. This budget doesn't lay anyone off, and, you know, that was a number-one goal in terms of, in a pandemic, for, for people to not have to turn back through the families and say that they've, you know, that they won't be able to, you know, provide in the current state of times. And to go back and reevaluate that a second time, which we may have to do, you know, I'm not sure, maybe May, June, July, hopefully there's some relief from the federal government. And we can really evaluate to continue to understand if there is attrition, just like some members have, have talked about, and what naturally would happen. You know, what opportunities are there to really build up the office, the new office that, where we've essentially taken a match of what the, of what the police budget is and put it towards Office of Community Health and, and Safety, and also the Stop the Violence Fund. And so how we really have that conversation with that office to continually, you know, remind, you know, that's really going to be a point where we continually are reminded of, well, we need to strengthen this office and figure out. I mean, when we had that conversation during the budget hearing, the substance, I mean, I really appreciate, you know, the, the goal of getting an office running, but we really need to understand how we're gonna, you know, how we're gonna put, we're gonna trust in professionals to really address issues of, of mental illness, homelessness, and what people are facing that the police essentially don't, you know, they're not equipped to handle. So people are in need, and how do we get them the resources that they need? We need to have a more robust conversation on those topics. And I know there is a briefing coming up this week about that, that office and, and what that's going to do for our communities. And I want, you know, I want to continue to strengthen those, that office in, in the areas of, a phrase that, that I've been, been able to understand more, which is urban poverty. And so, you know, partnering with programs that are going to address these issues are going to be essential to really solving some of these problems of systemic issues that have just, you know, plagued our society for so long. And so, you know, I'm looking forward to those relationships, I'm looking forward to relationships with the Stop the Violence Fund, so that we can actually, actually get outreach workers in, people who live in my neighborhoods, empower them, make sure that they have the resources to succeed, and so, and so that they, we can really, you know, they can really bridge the gap of, you know, feel, really feeling, filling the need of, of what's, what's most needed to really get people to, whether it's employment, housing, affordable housing, you know, to, to treat any sort of illness. So those are really the conversations and to, and to have an opportunity as an elected official to continually try to center voices that matter the most, which are black voices. And, you know, really have, you know, a robust conversation at our community meetings. I would love to see the speakers that, that come out today, that take an opportunity on a Saturday to, to, to speak to us, to come to these community meetings that, you know, on the North Side, I represent fourteen different neighborhoods. I need you at these meetings, because there, there are pivotal moments where, in these meetings that are happening, where decisions are being made on how money is being spent. And we can work together on projects in your neighborhood. And, you know, we can even talk about offering funds, you know, in, in those, in those, in those meetings. So I would, I really encourage you to come there as well, because that's really where we're going to make some real change as well. And, and, you know, I just want to thank the speakers again for coming out. Looking forward to seeing how much more the city council can do in terms of police reform. And I appreciate Councilman Lovell's comments on what we've already been able to accomplish this year. So I just want to let you know that your, your voices are not being, you know, we're not sitting here and not taking you seriously. It's a serious conversation, and everyone is trying to work together to figure out how we can actually achieve the end goal of making Pittsburgh a better place for, for people. So I appreciate your time today, and I will, I will, what's the saying? Give up my time?
Your time.
Relinquish my time?
Relinquish, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Gross?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So I just want to, I'll be brief, with the speakers have all been on the line for a long time. I want to thank them all for coming out today and for, and for using their voices to, we heard many, many people talking about, asking us directly to defund the police by fifty percent. I think it is within this council's body, power to look really hard at those budget numbers and to start having that conversation. I disagree with members about our supposed purported lack of power over the budget. We are the city council, that is our main function, is to make decisions about the budget. I disagree that we are not in a financial crisis. We had a sixty-million-dollar revenue shortfall this year, and there are a lot of departments that were cut significantly by twenty percent, some of them, even slightly higher than twenty percent. And so I, I, again, read Act one-eleven especially, and I, I believe that it refers to the power of the administration to fire police officers, not to a body of nine city council members to make policy choices about the budget. I do not believe that increasing the budget or decreasing the budget of any one of our departments is a political decision, it is a public policy decision. And we have seen very clearly that we've chosen not to reduce the police budget at this time. I do believe we should continue to look at that. I'm happy to hear members saying that they are at least considering looking at it by, you know, not replacing positions as police officers retire, because it will free up money for the things that citizens are in dire need of. We are rebuilding the city, we need to reinvest in neighborhoods, we have done a lot of good work. And I, and I appreciate, honestly, the good work that members have done to reform police, to reimagine police, to create greater oversight of police, to invest in the Stop the Violence Fund and the Gang Violence Initiative. That is all, was all groundbreaking work I was happy to support. And, but I, I've said this before, and I'll just reiterate it briefly, since I said I'd be brief, that there is work to be done in what police do, and we can reimagine and reform and try to work on that side of the issue. But there is also the other side of the issue, which was, we need to talk about how we reinvest in neighborhoods so that the police are less needed. And our callers and our commenters and the people who send us three thousand emails are clearly saying to use some of that budget money to do the work of reinvesting in communities. I believe we can do it, and we are just not ready to do it at this time. I, as many callers pointed out, I offered just a very small budget amendment that would have only defunded or reduced the police budget line by one percent in dollars, slightly less than one percent. And members were just not ready to talk about it at this time, and I hope that we continue the conversation to the new year. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other members?
Madam President.
Strasberg, Councilman.
Thank you. I, I'm just, I just want to say thank you to all the speakers for taking time out of their weekend to, to really give us some, I think, even more nuanced and more detailed requests and charges and mandates to look into and to consider. I thought these comments were really, really, I mean, really helpful and really well-taken. I'm certainly going to think about them a lot over the next couple of days. And I also just wanted to wholeheartedly agree with what Councilman Lovell laid out. He basically took the words out of my mouth, so thank you to everyone else who was here today, to council members and, and staff and our interpreters as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I just want to also thank the interpreters and, and the public commentators for coming out. But I want to tell the interpreters, my grandchildren were with me this weekend, they were watching you and trying to learn a little bit of everything you're teaching, so thank you very much for what you do as well. But I do want to say that, I think that this council, as I mentioned, yes, there's somebody who wants to speak?
Madam President? Sorry. Corey, I just wanted to, I'll be brief, I know we're, we're towards the end. I just want to thank everybody for their calls. I want to thank all council members. I think Councilman Lovell made some great points, as Councilwoman Strasberg said. I do want to say that, you know, as Chair of Public Safety, we do know that there's a new department that's pushing more for social services, and I think that's a bigger conversation that in the future, we definitely have to spend more funding on. I also know that Tuesday, I'm hosting the post-agenda on the Mayor's Task Force and how public safety has implemented some of those tools over the last few months and what they plan to do in the next couple of years. So I just wanted to add that. I know it's been a long day, and I just want to thank everybody for attending and, and calling in. So thank you, Madam President, as well for chairing this.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. And so I just want to get back, any other members before I start? Are you sure? Okay. I'll just be real brief. I just want to say that I think that Councilman Lovell said just about everything that we really wanted to say, but he said it much more eloquently than I would have said it myself. But I do want to say that we have a, a council that really does want, they really do want to hear from people, they really do, are thinking outside the box in how we can do some different things, including a regular meeting and, and, you know, once a month or something on a different day or time. So we are looking into that. And, and it wasn't because council was forced to, it was because council heard, and we, and we do hear. And it's not that we don't want to do some of the things that you want to have done. We have for a long time advocated and, and wanted social, social services to get into our communities. Me, personally, I would like to see the county who gets two billion dollars to do so, to make sure that they're doing a needs assessment and to bring some of those programs into our area. to make sure that they're doing a needs assessment and to bring some of those programs into our area. Um, I disagree with the part about defunding the police and and not for the reasons, you know, I've heard all sorts of sorts of things and they're almost insulting the reasons why people think that. But it's because my community and and that needs them the most are the ones saying, don't you dare. So I just want you to understand, it's not that, um, and they and they do do a lot in in terms of police community relationship building. And they are delivering food and they are doing things to help people get things that they do need. And you're people were right, they're not social social workers. That's not their role and it's unfair to even put them in that position as well. But I do want to make sure that when people call for a social worker, they're actually showing up. Because I don't want people to, I don't want to take something away and give them not people nothing in return. So they get no response. So that's been my, you know, an issue I've spoke about numerous times. But I do want to say that, you know, I don't, I don't talk about this work. And I'm not talking about just because there's a mayor election coming up or just because some there's a presidential race coming up or whatever, you know, before. Um, I I talked about these things and did these things for twenty five years, as it's many of the members here on council. Many of us have fed people in the community, have helped people with housing, have delivered resources throughout our communities. And it's not that then we don't come on and 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 tell you about all the things we've done. But we we hear and we know the needs out there. We are, we are in the trenches and the and these council members, I've never, I can be honest with you. I've been involved in the community for decades. I never remember having council members doing the things I see these people doing. And and they work really hard and I just want to acknowledge that. And I think that people want to hear. And I think that Councilwoman uh, Strasburger and I were talking about possibly having a meeting with some of the people in the community that are that have concerns. And maybe we can try to try to work through some of those those issues. Because I always think things are better when we work through them. And then we get the best results for the people that we all say we care about. And so it's not we're saying that we care about them, we're actually showing that we care about them by working together. So I hope that we'll do that and I'll work with you, Councilwoman, on the things we were talking about. But I I I'm looking forward to working with all of council. I just want to thank you all again for giving up your time on a Saturday um, and and look forward to having more meetings where we can have, public can have greater access to to us. We used to have uh, district offices, so people come see us anytime. And they cut that funding out with Act forty seven, so there is no such thing. But I think it would be nice to have something uh, more more frequently where the residents could reach us. So with that said, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? So moved. Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Be safe.